So still feel free to chat.
The time is now 5:00 PM and we will get started this regular meeting of the Board of Education here at Westminster Public Schools. Veronica, can you please call roll?
Mr. Chancho, Mr. David Duck.
Here.
Ms. Martinez. Mr. Math.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Present. Moving on to the next item, we have the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by students from Sherwood Elementary and Tennyson Knowles.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna move on to the next item which is Agenda Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments? With none, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Duck.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez. Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to Minutes Approval.
Mr. President, I approve, I move the Board of Education to approve the regular board meeting minutes dated February 11th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any comments? With none, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Duck.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez. Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye. One more set of outstanding minutes.
I move the Board of Education to approve the Executive and Study Session Meet Minute, Session Meeting Minutes dated February 11th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any comments? With none, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Duck.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez. Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye. Excellent. Moving on to Recognitions, we have the Spelling Bee Winners with Mr. Steve Saunders.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Swanson. If we could have our Spelling Bee winners come down here and stand next to me on this side. I'm going to introduce you all and then the Board of Education will come out and take a picture with you, so that'll be a great time for parents to come down and take a picture as well. So guys, line up on this side. I'll call your name, I'll give you a certificate. You can stand on this right here. Good to see all you guys again. So tonight will not be as long as the night of the Spelling Bee, which I think everybody knows went really, really late because everybody was such a good speller. And another reason to keep it short is because you guys probably have to go back and study some more words tonight, right? Because the state Spelling Bee is March 14th on the DU campus and these are the five students who are gonna represent us, but they've already made us all so proud. So here's one more time for us all to give you a round of applause and tell you how proud we are of you guys, all of you. So our, we'll start with our elementary Spelling Bee winners and then I'll give you your certificate. You can come to that side and look at your family and do whatever you want to do and then the Board will come down and meet you. Alright, Evan Clark representing Colorado STEM Academy.
Yeah!
I forgot how well you did that, the night of. Alright, second place, Erica Altamari representing Tennyson Knowles Elementary. Now we will do our middle school winners and first place representing John Flynn Marzano Academy and we're oh so proud of her, Annalee Alvarado. Annalee. I think I got it wrong when we were together last time. Second place also representing Shaw Heights Middle School, Nathan Klemeko. And third place also representing Shaw Heights, Mike Carlson, must be doing something right up there, Simeon Guthrie. Simeon. So, congratulations guys and like we said, March 14th is your opportunity to go down for state competition as well. We're all so proud of you and the Board of Education wants to shake your hands as well, so they'll come by, we'll get a couple of pictures. Parents feel free to come on down and take some pictures as well. Let me grab a camera.
Alright, moving on, we have more recognition with our Fred Award winners.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Swanson, I don't know how good of spellers they are, but we know they're some great employees. So tonight is our Fred Award winner presentation for this quarter and Mike Lynch has the honor.
But do they know how to dance down to the...
That is the key.
Alright, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Swanson, I was just told by Dr. Grenham, I told him I was channeling my inner Fred and he said, "Who, Freddy Krueger?" I said, "No, Fred Rogers with the sweater." Before we bring these guys down, I wanted to, Oliver said it, I wanted to reinforce on the front of this book, and you guys have probably heard of this award and maybe seen this book. It says how passion in your work and life can turn the ordinary into extraordinary. And I, these two nominations, and I read the today, I'm like, this is money. So both of these candidates certainly fit the bill. So first, could I have Leona Lalas come down and she was nominated by Caitlin Rohr?
There you go. Just like a preschool teacher.
So, Leona, she's pretty much been there since I started. She was always like right next to me. So Leona's always thinking of others and always puts others' needs before her own. She's a trooper and she's very talented and she's definitely in the right profession that she's in.
That was all.
So, Leona, you're so, you're that and so much more and your reputation precedes you, so it was a slam dunk when I was told when you were nominated by you. Thank you very much. So here's your Fred book. Here's your trophy made by Colorado STEM and here's your Fred pen. Wear it every day for the rest of your life. Okay, Beverly Cloud is our next winner and Russ Warwick, are you here? There he is, they're right there. Wow, snuck up, come on up.
I'm gonna apologize a little bit in advance, I'm fighting off a cold, so bear with me. Members of the Board, Dr. Swanson, thank you for giving me a few moments to recognize Beverly Cloud, our school psychologist. Bev has been working at Westminster Academy for five years and she is a crucial part of our leadership team. She's being nominated by both me and Brenda Martin from STEM. Bev's efforts around social-emotional learning and her leadership on our SII, that's our Student Intervention and Improvement Team, has helped us not only create the wonderful culture and climate we have at Westy Academy, but has also helped us to close the achievement gap. That's just where her impact starts. Bev can be counted on to be there for all of her students and never shies away from doing what's best for any student, whether the child be in our building, in another building, or if that child is my own son. Her colleagues outside of Westy Academy agree with this sentiment from Brenda Martin, Principal at Colorado STEM Academy. And I'm quoting Brenda here, "During one particularly busy day at STEM, our mental health interventionist was working with a student in crisis when another pressing situation arose. It was near the end of the day and we knew we needed to get help. We called Bev and she was over within a minute, a matter of minutes and went right to work so she could give all the students and families that supported that they needed. She stayed well past the end of the day to help the kids and the families. She's pretty amazing." This is how Bev approaches helping any student anywhere. Bev goes above and beyond her job description. She's done home visits with terminally ill students. She's traveled with students abroad. And let me just be clear here, our middle schoolers are the best in the state, but traveling abroad with a dozen middle schoolers is not a vacation, so just want to make sure that's clear. And has been there to support our students during funerals of family members. This is remarkable. Finally, the thing I like best about Bev is that I don't think she thinks she's doing anything special. I think she is genuinely surprised that she's being awarded tonight. That's why I'm here. I've heard her say a hundred times, as if this was just her ordinary. I think we should all aspire to Bev's definition of ordinary. Bev definitely earns the Fred Award and we're blessed to have her. Thank you for your time and we've gotta run right out for this because we have conferences tonight, so.
So Beverly, on behalf of the Board and the District, here's your Fred book. Read it tonight. There's your pen every day the rest of your life and your trophy and congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had you.
Yeah, I mean, appreciate it.
Alrighty, we're gonna move on to the Superintendent Report with Dr. Pamela Swanson.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. While we focus our attention on the business at hand tonight, I think most of us, we have our hearts a little farther north. For tonight, the Lady Wolves, the Westminster High School Girls Basketball Team, is playing in Round One of the State Playoffs. That deserves a round of applause. Tipoff against the Windsor Wizards is at 6:30. Windsor is 12 and 11 this year, while the Wolves are an impressive 14 and 9. We have a spirit bus headed up to Windsor right now to support the team. We do have a study session after tonight's meeting, but hopefully we'll be able to monitor the game a little bit there, so if we're checking our devices, Ryan, you can't get too mad at us. The winner of tonight's games will play the highly ranked Fossil Ridge Team Thursday night. And regardless of the outcome tonight, congratulations to Coach Jeff Dennis and his team. And not too long ago, Greg Moss, the City of Westminster's Innovation Director, was before us to talk about several joint projects the city is doing with our high school students to give them real-world experience and also benefit back to our community. So yesterday, their team met with our students at the Irving Street Library to discuss plans for the Community Cares Day scheduled for Monday, June 22nd. Our students will play a major role in the planning and execution of the project, which will help our homeless and our at-risk population over there. And so look for a video in the very near future that details this one-of-a-kind collaborative project. A week from Friday, switching gears here, is the Westminster Public Schools Foundation Annual Breakfast. And Denver Judge Teresa Spawn, a Westminster High School graduate, is our keynote speaker. And the theme this year is superheroes and the breakfast video will highlight four student superheroes. And they are Lena V. Hill, a sixth grader from Metropolitan Arts Academy, Andres, is it Gaitan? It's Gaitan. An eighth grader at Scott Carpenter Middle School, Angelica Valdez, a senior at Westminster High School, and Tim Yang, a senior at Westminster High School. And we have a short video preview to give you a glimpse of why they have been selected.
I like waking up every day, just knowing that there's another day, more days, more years to live, to find more happiness.
I like to help out a lot. Like, some kids will like try to come to me when they're like need some help with their essay. And I like put my work aside because I know I'll get it done, so I just try to help them first.
I feel like I'm a voice for the students who are not in my position and can, I can actually like communicate that to people who are making the, who are making the laws, who are making these things possible.
The best takeaway for other people is for them to be themselves, no matter what the situation. And for them, no matter what, to get help from others, because help from others is a blessing.
So that should be a fun time, if any of you all can, can make it. As we're speaking about young people, I think it's also fair to say all of us have some concerns about the impact too much screen time is having on people, especially our young students. And so in April, Tyge Asnikar, where's Tyge? Way back, Tyge, okay. And his team have arranged for the showing of two important town hall documentaries for parents and students that deal with this particular issue. You'll see the title up there, Screenagers Growing Up in the Digital Age and Screenagers Next Chapter are award-winning movies that will be shown for free at the Joanna Ramsey Theater here at Westminster High School. We will be rolling out a lot of information about the showings over the next month and a half. Screenagers Growing Up in the Digital Age will be shown twice on Wednesday, April 8th, 1:30 and 5:00 PM. And Part Two, Screenagers Next Chapter, will be shown twice on Tuesday, April 14th, 1:30 and 6:00 PM. Tyge, would you like to add anything to that? Come down here. Yeah, just come down here. So we can hear you in the microphone. I know it's an important topic. Screens are a part of our life, but can also be excessive, right?
I don't mean to embarrass you having to come down here, but I just wanted to correct you on your date on the 14th.
Correct me, correct me on my date.
It's three and five. Three and six, excuse me.
Okay, so let's, let's go back.
Do them again.
Do it again.
The eighth, one and three.
Okay.
No. One and five. The fourteenth. Three, six.
Tyge, do I need to worry about you? Okay. Well, your colleagues are gonna give it to you now for that. Okay, but thank you, I think. Alright. And finally, a couple of quick thoughts about the meeting earlier this month. It was, it was humbling for me. It was the School Superintendents Association at the national level where I was invited out. And Max, I want to thank you for going with me and representing the school board. I appreciated having everyone there. I was able to represent Colorado as Superintendent of the Year. And as I told my team, it was more humbling than I thought it would be and it made me so proud to be standing among really some exceptional educators and leaders from across the nation. And I think all of us on that stage from all 50 states would agree that none of those awards were our own awards, they were us awards. And I, I give that credit away as often as I can for the district-wide team effort that I know our staff pours into their jobs for our children every single day. And so the plaque that I received that evening has a wonderful quote from Abraham Lincoln and it reads, "I view education as the most important subject in which we as a people can be engaged in." So thank you, staff of Westminster Public Schools, thank you, Max, for being there. And with that, that concludes my...
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. Board, any questions or comments?
I just want to add that I met the, the national winner and went up to congratulate him from New Mexico.
No, from Oregon.
Oregon, I'm sorry, from Oregon. And he looked at me and I said, "I'm from Colorado" and he looked at me and he says, "You know what, you guys at Westminster Public Schools have a very special superintendent." And again, I'm, I'm here preaching again saying is I'm at a national conference and we have specifically calls Westminster Public Schools up. Totally blown away. I just sat there and said, "Thank you" and then walked away in awe, being a Westminster graduate. But to be at a national conference and have somebody just, Oregon who wins a national title and tells me, "We have some of these special Westminster Public Schools," and I have to agree with that.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Item Six with, which is the Board of Education Discussions. Board, do we have any comments, any things that we'd like to add? Have we had negotiations this week? Anything to add? Yeah, I'm just putting you guys on the spot.
I'll just say, Max, thanks for doing all the heavy lifting.
Well, I think we're, we're in the early phases, so we're, we're there. Again, I don't know if everybody knows, but we're kind of in a, a two-year agreement with the teachers, but we do come back and there are some issues that we're talking through. So we're, we're continuing. I think we have our next time set up here and I just want to say is that I've done this now a couple times and it, it's great to work with a group and, and work together. Considering where our national, where our federal government's at and how we don't work together, it's great to see, too, that I know in the years past have never really come together, but we, we're, we're together and it's great to work together and to be able to sit and hash through the things we need to hash through for the best of our children and for our teachers. So I look forward to our next meeting.
Just one thing to add, I know that we have, we are monitoring some legislation. One specifically, I know that's near and dear to our hearts, is the audit of the Accountability System. And I just, for those of you who are passionate about holding CDE accountable as well, I would recommend that you call your legislators and push them to support this bill when it comes to the floor. I'd be remiss in not acknowledging Shannon Byrd, our representative, who has championed this and is moving it forward because it's created a lot of headaches down there, but it's because people are, people are nervous about it. And let's hold CDE's feet to the fire as well.
I add one thing, Mr. President. This afternoon, Oliver and Jenny and I were also interviewed by Chalk Feed about it. What we find as laws in the current system and what we're looking for with an audit and essentially this, it's a modest ask.
It is.
It's a modest ask. We are audited to death and school districts even with mandated audits, we pay for it. So to have an ask, to have an audit of a law that's been in effect for over a decade, to find out just, has it done what it's set out to do or not, is a really modest ask.
And since you mentioned Shannon Byrd, it reminded me that I attended a town hall on Sunday with Representative Byrd and Senator Moreno hosted. Congressman Perlmutter was also in attendance on Civility and Tolerance. It was two hours, I'll tell you, it really went by very fast. The panelists were great, had a lot of good information. Just on how to, as we talked about even in our negotiations, to disagree without being disagreeing. Thought that was really, really well... I thought that was really, really well done, and I would thank them very much for hosting that. The students, after the panel spoke, they had some young college students come and also say some words, and that was very powerful as well. Also in attendance were two of our Padres from Adams 12, Laura Mitchell and Lori Goldstein. And had a nice conversation with them regarding some of the difficulties they're going through up in District 12 with regards to student suicide. And it was a nice conversation to have with them, obviously no easy answers. Certainly wish them the best in this difficult 40, 50-day period.
The last thing I will add is, three of your board members will be attending Casby's Winter Legislative Session, which is Thursday and Friday, and I believe it's Max and Christine, is that correct? So, we will be back at the table at the next board meeting, providing a detailed report. Well, these two will, it's their homework assignment. But just know that we're going down there to represent all educators and to listen to what's going on down there. All right, moving on to audience comments, and we have an audience comment. Fran Groff Gonzalez, if you could please head on down, and she will be speaking about WEA and WPS participation in CEA Day of Action on March 19. Thanks for the dance moves.
Did I have to dance like this? Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson, thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. So, on March 20th, March 19th?
19.
March 19th, the Colorado Education Association is having a big day of action, and the number one issue is educator pay. Westminster Public Schools, with our negotiated financial agreement last year, is the only school district in the state that meets the threshold of a living wage for educators. What's very special about Westminster Public Schools as well is that we have the highest teacher pay in the state, we have the highest ESP rate in 1,000 miles. So, what's special about us is that we're wall-to-wall. We represent everyone, and that's something that people are very interested in, in how we do that. So, we polled our staff about whether or not what the litmus test is of walking out that day. And it was hands-down, where we need to be is with our students. It's the Thursday before spring break, and by missing a Thursday, then we were worried about missing Friday. So, we are coordinating walk-ins, because we do want to show our colleagues across the state that we support fair educator pay across the state. So, we'll be rolling out at each school, a place to meet about 10, 15 minutes before the beginning of the day, asking people to wear red, walk in collectively as proud members and proud educators, and we'll show our support in that way. We would also like to say that we're going to be supporting Shannon and the legislation, so we'll be getting support there. I don't know why I'm so nervous. So, we are asking for board support. We'll get you guys some shirts. I'll ask Veronica for some sizes, so that we can get you some shirts to wear on that day. And if you're available to meet at one of the schools and walk in with the staff, that would be wonderful. We've also proposed some draft resolution that we got to Holly, so that she can make sure that we have all the right words there, but ask you to sign a resolution and support. Negotiations went well this year, I think, and it's very heartening that we're working together, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
During negotiations, you reminded me of something. Judy Solano, I know we were...
Okay. Right, right.
Former state representative Judy Solano, and I had called her to ask if she would support the audit and the charter bill. Of course, she was well ahead of me in the ask and said they're very much supportive of that. But her group is hosting, she's part of this group now called Advocates for Public Education Policy, A4PEP. They're having a conference in March, and she invited me, she invited all of us. I definitely will attend, I attended a year ago, too. But my point is, she, right away, when she saw my name on her caller ID, said, "You know, I wanted to call and thank you guys for what you've done for your teachers in terms of pay." She said, "That is just fantastic, and you're well above the curve, and your comments support that as well," so I wanted to pass that.
Special place to work, and we'd like to continue that, so, thank you. And get us information on that.
I've got it right here, and I'll forward it to Veronica.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to education report. We have Sherwood Elementary with Dr. Oliver Grinham, who will introduce Ms. Davis.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. Tonight, we'll hear from Sherwood and Tennessee Noel Elementary Schools regarding their achievement results, improvement efforts, and goal commitments for the 2019-20 school year. In preparation for tonight's presentation, each school has provided an executive summary and school data that speaks to the following: student and staff demographics, school performance framework data, student achievement, and stakeholder perception data. First, we have Principal Davis from Sherwood Elementary School, who is currently in her 11th year as principal. However, she first joined Westminster Public Schools back in 1984, serving as an instructional aide and later as a Title I teacher, and then as district title coordinator before becoming principal. In July 2009 is when she became principal at Sherwood, and in her presentation tonight, she'll speak about the instruction improvement efforts and changes that are well underway at Sherwood Elementary School. Principal Davis, please come to the podium.
So many microphones. Does that work?
Yep, either one is fine.
Well, first, I, too, have to apologize like Russ, come to you with a cold, and I hope not to sneeze, cough, or need too much water while I'm up here, but I was able to dodge it till February, so I think that's pretty good. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson, for having me here tonight. Tonight, I'll share with you how Sherwood makes a difference. Sherwood makes a difference in academics and in many other ways as well. Tonight, I'd like to share how we prepare our students for the day after elementary We will begin tonight with the school performance framework, prepared for us by Colorado Department of Education. If you look up into the top-right corner, am I too close? You will see two yellow boxes. In academic achievement, we are in the approaching category, and in academic growth, we are also in the approaching category. However, if you look at the school performance framework on the left, you see that we are a priority improvement planned school, so not quite a complete match. Academic achievement, you'll see 2018 on the left and 2019 on the right. This slide shows comparison of last year's score to this year's. Our overall rating in English Language Arts, excuse me, and in math is still approaching, the same as last year, the same as the last 10 years. An English learner will contribute scores to the school rating in possibly four to five areas typically, so it's not just the one score that you see for all students. English learners in 2019 decreased in ratings to does-not-meet in ELA and math. The science scores also declined. We recognize that we have work to do in this area, and we did not sit still, we are addressing that now. Academic growth. Academic growth has the same categories as achievement, except for fifth-grade science, which doesn't have growth scores. Again, in 2019, English learners decreased in ELA, and the overall growth score in math is does-not-meet. Our English language proficiency decreased from needs to approaching. You can see that at the very bottom, it's called ELP. 2018, it was meets, and this year it was approaching. So, as you can see, our English learner category had the most decline. We know we need to refocus on this. I'll highlight for you throughout this presentation the different ways that we are addressing Sherwood's commitment. Sherwood's English Language Arts, Math, and Science commitments are listed here. I'll share with you some of the other ways we plan to increase our scores overall and in the subgroups, as well as I'll share with you some mid-year data. District assessments. Here are our middle-of-the-year DIBELS and Scantron reading and Scantron math scores. We show increases in 11 of the 15 areas, we stay the same in three areas, and down in one. Plans are also in place to address any of these areas. Competency-based design. Sherwood spends time every week looking at data to drive our instruction, but there might be other ways to give our students a better advantage on the way that they are judged. Staff recently had Dr. Marzano present on thinking frames and the importance to teach our students cognitive skills for the state assessment and in life. Beyond thinking frames, there are other strategies in our competency-based system that works. We are addressing science on our STEM Fridays and mapping targets K through 5 just this afternoon in our staff meeting. So, we are not sitting still when we see that we have areas to improve on. You can see from the list that we have STEM Fridays and are embarking on project-based learning as well, with science as our main theme and passion projects. We are revisiting vocabulary again this year with a school-wide focus across all levels and contents. This also supports our English learners through the study of root words, incognates, and used in context. Learner-centered classrooms. We still remain focused on learner-centered classrooms. There is an emphasis on student ownership of learning along with leadership. Using Empower and Student Data Binders allows students to assist in goal-setting and action steps. We had some visitors just last week, and this was one of the number-one things that they were looking for in our classrooms, because you don't just walk in and see it. You have to talk to kids, you have to talk to teachers, dig deep to find it. Other areas you would see in our learner-centered classrooms are listed above. Kegan Cooperative Learning has been a big push for over three years and increases student engagement. This is especially good for our English learners and our special ed learners, so they can learn at grade level, right alongside with the other students. We have two coaches in our school. We do monthly observations and provide feedback to staff. Every staff meeting starts with a Kegan structure as well. Our school loves it. Our kids love it. On this page, you can view some things that strengthen our social and emotional learning. More than anything, those types of strategies are needed. Our daily meetings increase relationships in classrooms and in common areas in the school. This allows for more time spent learning. We connect these things back to the habits and understanding of everyone's culture. Social-emotional learning is a strength at Sherwood. Our building-wide theme is choose kind. It resonates through all our classrooms and our school. We have monthly assemblies with a focus on a particular trait or habit of kindness. Most recently, our themes have been accountability, ownership, perseverance, grit, and empowerment. It takes continuous improvement to sustain and build capacity with your staff. Over the years, while introducing new strategies to improve instruction, you still have to sustain the previous learning. Don't take your eye off that ball. Sherwood also has a strength in recruiting and retaining staff. That is something we are very proud of. Some of the areas we spend time on refreshing each year are listed above. The Balanced Instructional Delivery Guide focuses on content knowledge and components of literacy and math. We receive outside support for math instruction from Art Droitar and Jeff Raposa. And most recently, our Envision Math Training that we had, that I was thrilled to be a part of the adoption team. We also receive support for literacy. We have, just from the district, we have Rachel Fox. From Amplify, we have Kathy Bratton. And an outside coach, we have Patty Shoemaker. We have extra focus on CLD this year and most years. CLD at the district level provides professional development for our specialists. Those specialists then bring back their new knowledge to our school, and we try to provide what we call CLD moments at most of our staff meetings. We also have several conferences that we've attended this year. The staff have requested to help them with some of their personal goals. Spending time on Westminster Public Schools instructional model is working well for our school. Some of the components we have addressed include proficiency skills, assessment and feedback, engagement, and now metacognitive and life skills. We've dabbled a little bit in most all of them and are trying to complete the ones that will help us to meet our HRS Level 1. We have many ways to look at student data and analyze the results. Most importantly, what will be the next steps that the teacher and the student take for improvement. We have done this with our CLD students, and we've also analyzed our math results as Given our decrease in CLD, English learner scores, we have focused our efforts in that area. We are now providing CLD quick walks with our coaches and our CLD specialists. We're providing coaching one-on-one with teachers. Kegan Cooperative Groups for Engagement, a literacy focus in our language groups, project-based learning that also benefits science and includes passions as well. Shared vision. Not only does the school have a vision, but every classroom and student has a vision, and every teacher. Our surveyed students, staff, and parents believe that we have a safe and orderly school where students are welcomed and encouraged to love learning. Leadership is another strong trait at our school. You can see from the activities listed above that we open our school to our families and we encourage their participation. Coming up on March 5, we have a family showcase where parents will be the teachers, and they will teach sessions to the students on their talents, skills, and culture. Our students are leaders. Our student leadership team is just one of the ways students become leaders at our school. We had 60 applicants this year. They must receive a referral by an adult, write an essay about why they would be good in this position, and pass a brief interview. 30 were accepted this year. They get involved in things such as food drives, our annual visit to St. Anthony's, our spirit days, field day, and I am going to form a principal cabinet with students as well. That will be something new on my plate. Community leadership. Every year, we try to expand our community partnerships. Some of them include Rotary, who gave us laptops this year for intermediate students, NAG, which is a longtime committee in our neighborhood, who provided bully-proofing conference for our students, a local church that has a food bank for our neighborhood, again, St. Anthony's, when we visit annually. Most recently this year, we added nursing homes, and they couldn't be more pleased and want us to come back throughout the year, so we'll add some more of that. Trying to build those community relationships, even if you're not attached to a school, you can see what's still going on in your neighborhood and make a difference that way. And then, school-wide leadership. Here is a list of some of the school-wide leadership events that we have had for a while. My principal coffee every month is probably the one I cherish the most. It gets me up close and personal with the parents. It's what brings in the school volunteers, and they start initiatives on their own. They started a dance, they started a festival, so they want to get things happening in their own school. We make a difference for others. We spend many hours on continuous learning. Sometimes, we seek out conferences we need to help us grow. Sometimes, we share our strength and knowledge with others. There is so much that we do that goes beyond reading and a math score, and maybe someday we can be measured on that, too. I have many things to say to all of you tonight. A few are listed up there, and I thank you for listening tonight. we can be measured on that, too. I have many things to say to all of you tonight. A few are listed up there, and I thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you. Board, questions, comments? Davis?
I think your event with your parents is great and the involvement that you have from parents. Can you give me a little bit more about what happens on March 5th and the parents that are coming in? Is it every class? How does that?
It should make me- ... teacher come down who's leading it, but she'd kill me later.
It sounds so fun.
What?
It sounds fun and-
Yeah, and it's a first time for us, so, as you know, I'm usually big on the Read Across America, so I put that more into the classrooms this year. We are a Title I school, and so with our Title I funds, we're often encouraged by Linda Kaster to make sure we have that parent involvement.
Okay.
And we do have our parents taking off wanting to lead some things on their own. So one of the things that we did during conferences was Ms. Miller had them sign up for things they thought they could share with students. And so she was recruiting them over there, and they would sign up. You know, I'm a professional cake baker and cake decorator, so that's something I can share. Somebody else owns a taco food truck, my favorite. So they were signing up for things that they felt they could share with their kids. We're always trying to expose everyone's culture, as well as show kids that anybody can be a leader, anybody can teach. And so our plan, and we haven't pulled it off yet, I invite you all to be there, but it is during the day, and in every classroom, there is a partner parent. And so the parent is really leading this out. Obviously, the teachers are there to help out with discipline and management and all of that, and we are relating it back to math and science and, excuse me, math and literacy. There might be science in there, too. I think we have some gardening. So, you know, many skills and talents, but a way to showcase our families and get them involved with something they're proud of.
That's wonderful.
Veronica, can you just add that to our calendars and if we, just as a reminder?
Sure. We'll send out an invitation as well.
Please. That's great.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, Sheryl Wood is always one of my most favorite schools to come and visit.
Yay!
It's always nice to visit with you for a short time. I think last time I was there, we talked a little bit in-depth about the student leadership team, and that was a very nice conversation, and you hold those 30 students to hire.
Definitely.
And they can be removed from that leadership team.
They can and have.
And they have, exactly. And I guess I agree, too. Beyond reading and math score, your comment there at the end may be one day we can be measured by all of the other things we do. You're a student, and you're a teacher, and you're a staff member, and we can measure by all of these other things that we do for parents and kids and families in our community and our school, rather than just a math or reading score.
And I'm proud to be sitting on a committee that's doing kind of a first look at that, so I feel passionate about that as well.
Well done, as always.
Thank you.
Just because you're already speaking to the student leadership group, I did have one question in regards to that. What, are there certain grade levels that I have to be in or age that-
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five.
Mm-hmm. So it is something to look forward to. We do talk to the primary students about it, and they look up to them and see them involved. So, for example, they lead out the field day. So they show up at six o'clock in the morning with our Coach Garcia, and they're setting up, and they run the stations, and the children, you know, K-5, see that and aspire to be like that as well.
Is this, is it similar to student government, or is it?
Yes, it is similar, but better.
Okay. Robert's Rules of Order.
It sounds like they can be hired and fired from this, is what it sounded like.
They can. They can. You know, and we've taken the time to look at social-emotional learning that Melissa Sandoval has shared with our school, as well as the habits, and many more things that we bring forward as well. And working with our kids through monthly themes and using our student leadership team to help teach out some of those themes as well.
Phil, excuse my voice, I'm sharing this virus with some of my other friends out there. I just had a question about your, that hit you took in fourth grade scores.
Yeah.
What do you attribute that mostly to, or do you have an answer, is it?
That one actually is a little bit of a surprise, because I did put a very strong teacher in that, in that area, but I also had a new teacher in that area, so I thought through the combination that it would probably equal out, but it did not. And so we broke it down, looked at it kid by kid. And so one thing the teachers know this year that they might not have known before is, number one, who are your duration children? Who are those children that move from third to fourth and fourth to fifth that will bring you in a growth score? And know them well. And if you have five extra minutes, pull up one of those children. And because, you know, our data has shown that they need a little extra time with that. But knowing who your students are, who's going to bring you growth, what you can do about that, that's what you're responsible for at this school.
That was kind of my follow-up, Dean. Did you have some kids that kind of came in late to the game and weren't familiar with-
Well, in growth, you don't. So, and that's where we took the drop. In growth, it is the kids who are in third grade. So that's the kids who you have to bring up. So you are looking at multiple grade levels when you look at that. I will say that the support from Jeff Raposa and Art Drohtar has, I've doubled my support this year with both of them. And I know you've probably heard of other things they're doing out in the schools, but they've taught consistent mental models throughout the school, K-5. Everybody in the audience knows it is ICT. And so they're using that consistently in our school, and they're using it across the district. So when new kids come into our school, they're familiar with this model. And basically, it's, the kids must always give you three parts to an answer. And by using that with the students, they can apply this to CMAS as well. And it's something they can do on the board with the teacher watching, it's something they can do with a partner, it's something they can do on a state test. And so being more consistent about that. Art Drohtar gives them homework to do, and so the teachers come back having taught up a certain lesson and bringing back that information. And they sit right there and grade it, and then he gives them information on, now you need to go back and do this. Did you ask the kids this? So there's a lot of questioning involved as well with the work that he has them doing. And then Jeff Raposa is there to back up anything that Art has been working on. He attends our full-day PDS with us, and then he meets with individual teachers and coaches them along the way. And these are two opportunities that the district has provided the schools across the district.
So, you might not-
Oh, but the number-one thing that's going to make a difference is Envision. So, very excited to use it. We were in the, one of the first groups that took off with it. I mentioned earlier, I did have an opportunity to be on that adoption committee. And so thrilled with a lot of things that it's offering. Few glitches to work out, but we don't mind being in the pilot group for that if we can use it first. But I'm already hearing great reviews from my teachers and other teachers across the district. So I do hope that that raises the rigor and solidifies some things in math for us. Mm-hmm.
You might not be able to answer this question, so I'm looking over at Oliver, too. So is Art, he's a consultant within the district? What's the name of the, is it just Art Drohtar?
It's just Art.
Just Art Consulting?
Art Drohtar Inc. Art-
But he focuses on math. Okay.
Art used to be a director, retired.
And company-
Right. And I just, and then Jeff is-
Jeff Raposa is a district-level math coach.
And how many schools is Jeff at? Is it half of our schools? Okay.
We are fortunate to have him housed at our school.
Okay.
But I never see him. He's always at the other schools.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments before I get to my list? It's not, it's not a daunting list or anything along those lines, so these are, a lot of my questions have actually already been answered, which is great. You had one thing on your presentation, stakeholder input. Can you, because for me, when you said stakeholder input, I just assumed it was the parents, but then you had coffee with the principal listed as that as well, so can you describe stakeholder input?
Well, that's actually a really big one, the coffee with the principal, because it is an informal time.
Okay.
You know, we do an announcement at night, send stickers home on the kids, it's on the calendar for the year, and it's an informal time, because it is their time, there's no agenda. It is their time to say, what do you want to talk about? One day, they want to talk about the parking lot. The next day, they want to turn, you know, the end-of-the-year farewell into a huge festival. They've created two dances in our building. So it's their input on those kinds of things, as well as we created kind of a brainstormed list at the beginning of the year, because their number-one concern was about safety and welfare of their kids. So we did a big brainstorm on a large chart paper, and then every time they return, I try and share a little piece on it and how they feel about it, what they think about it, gathering their opinions on it. Do they think this works for their child? So a lot of concern about just community safety and welfare. They've requested, like, to have our school psychologists come talk to them about, you know, texting and things like that, and what's the impact on their students with things like that, bullying. And so they have many topics that they like to hear about, but they create the agenda at those meetings. So that's one of my biggest one that has stakeholder input.
How often are you doing the meetings?
We meet once a month.
Let me know when your next one is.
I'm sorry?
Let me know when your next one is.
Okay, that'd be great. I scared them off last time because I added PTO to it.
Yeah.
Nobody came.
Scares everyone.
My gosh. So I'm just going to do it and not tell them.
There you go.
At least you're not Roger and you conduct your DAC meeting-
Oh, I would never do that.
At the-
Just kidding. I always have to give Roger a hard time.
Let me have it for saying that, calling him out.
Veronica, can you go to Slide 6, please? I think it was 6. Sorry, we just went quick through this, I wanted to read it one more time. A lot of what you were presenting on was in regards to collaboration amongst staff and bringing the teachers together and looking at data. Can you maybe elaborate a little bit more in regards to how often you meet as a team going through your data? Is it in certain pockets, like it's Level 1 and 2, et cetera?
Yeah, great question. They will tell you too much, so I think it's just the right amount. We have several PLCs and committees and teams that, in our school. First of all, I believe in the teachers being the leaders in the building, and so we establish shared leadership when it comes to running committees, being parts of teams. I am usually the secondary person, and a teacher is usually the lead of that. So I create pretty much a committee list every year. Who is going to lead out the parent committee? Who is going to lead out the academic leadership team? Who's going to lead out the behavior leadership team? And then all of these committees meet typically once a month. There are probably about 10 or 15 of them. Some of them are leadership teams from the district, the math leadership team, the empower leadership team, the mentor leadership team, so the list goes on and on. But my number-one goal is to find out their talents and skills and put them in charge of that, so then I become the secondary person on the committee. And so if I step away at any time, these groups keep running themselves. We also have staff meetings every Tuesday from 3:20 to 4:30. They trade out some Friday time to stay till 4:30. We have what we call professional learning communities. That occurs on Wednesdays from 3:20 to 4:00 every day. Typically, the teachers will tell you what the topic is or what the goal is prior to the meeting, and then they'll make an announcement of what it is, and interventionists also join classroom teachers at those PLCs. We also have huge data meetings three times a year where we spend two days looking at all of the data. So it's the interventionists who work as the assessment team, and once again, they lead that out, and then they bring the classroom teachers in with them. And when they leave that day, they've created data cards on their students. Some of them have student data profiles. They will leave with what they're going to do on Monday. So groups are broken out into skills based on the data that we, that they have analyzed. We also have special interventionist PLCs where just the interventionists come together. They do have specialized needs for their kids, and so they do need time together as well. It's also when they take time to look at the blended model and framework for interventionists that Steve Sandoval continues to carry on in our district, and we try to model that well at Sheryl Wood. So then there are the impromptu parent meetings, and the one that we've been having all week to get ready for our March 5th date. So you have standardized meetings as well as the impromptu meetings, and then there are team meetings by the classroom teachers as well that they call themselves. And so if two fourth-grade teachers or two Level 3 teachers want to work together, maybe on their units, they'll spend time together as well. So I do have plenty of time to meet, but I also think we spread it out enough so that it's effective and no one feels overwhelmed by it.
I'm just looking at your commitment cards here. Do you believe that you have the resources you need to get to those scores?
I do now. Before I had, before when I didn't have math, I would have said no.
Great. Well, thank you, and you do have a wonderful community over there at Sheryl Wood.
Thank you. It's good to see you all tonight.
Thank you.
Sheryl Wood for being here.
Next, we will hear about the academic progress at Tennyson Knolls Elementary School from Principal Heather McGuire. This is Principal McGuire's third year as principal at Tennyson Knolls. Previously, she served as assistant principal and a teacher at the Colorado STEM Academy. Tonight, she will stretch our thinking and share the journey that Tennyson Knolls has been on this school year. Principal McGuire, please come forward to share your school story.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. I'm proud being here tonight, representing the amazing students, staff, and community of Tennyson Knolls. As you remember from last year, I invited you to take a ride on the energy bus. Pictured, you can see that we once again visited our families before the school year started. And even though we continue to drive this bus daily, tonight, I have a new invitation for you. Please join our staff in choosing a word for the year. A word to help focus your work personally and professionally. A word that will help you remind, help remind you and guide you. As you can see behind me, each staff member at Tennyson Knolls has chosen an individual word. These individual words help us with our work each day, working on our staff-chosen word of stretch. Pictured on the left is an image that's on our staff handbook, reminding us to stretch both sides of our brain. And on the right, you can see Ms. Cassin and a Level 5 student Fernando showing their words with pride. Student words line many of the walls of Tennyson Knolls. Tonight, you'll leave here understanding why and how we are stretching at Tennyson Knolls. So why stretch? Well, as you can see from our school performance framework and rating, we've declined each year for the past three years. This is definitely not a result of effort given by both staff and students. According to the CMAS growth report, our major areas of decline were with our language learners. Pictured at the top, the 2018 results, and in the bottom table, you can see the 2019 results. Both meet areas in 2018 fell to approaching in 2019. Both are with our language learners. Specifically, in language arts, our students who exited the CLD course circled in red, their median growth percentile dropped more than 12 percentage points. Meanwhile, circled in green just below, our students qualifying for free and reduced lunch rebounded their growth percentile, returning it to the 49th median growth percentile. Circled in green on the right, we have some celebrations. In math, if you compare Level 4 students in 2018 to the Level 5 students in 2019, thus comparing the same students, you can see that we had almost a 20-point increase in our median growth percentile. And our Level 4 students in 2019 received their highest median growth percentile for the last three years. To say that we were disappointed with our overall school performance framework score and rating is a massive understatement. However, as John Gordon says, "Today you have a choice, get bitter or get better. The past is the past, learn from it and let it go. Move forward and create the life you want." So, stretch became our word. We each made a commitment to celebrate and stretch our successes while making changes and stretching ourselves in order to get better growth and achievement results. At the beginning of the school year, all staff were surveyed on their professional needs and strengths. We use this survey and our test results to determine our next steps. Next, we turned all early release time into professional learning community time, focusing first on commonly scoring writing assessments and then adding common math assessments. Each teacher- Each teacher gives every student a common writing and math assessment based on their level, and then their teachers work together to score these and determine next steps in order to improve our instructional practices. We also work to make sure that we're also setting high expectations for every student. In addition, 100% of the Tennyson Knowles instructional staff continued taking CLD coursework this year online, even though many of them have a culturally and linguistically diverse endorsement already. And I focused my work with the Cognia Coach, working specifically on high expectations for all students and increased student engagement. The table on the left compares the number of suspensions this time of year for the past three years. We've achieved this huge success through our blended approach of mindfulness, class meetings, trauma-informed practices, de-escalation techniques, restorative discipline, and understanding ourselves and students better through an emerg genetics lens. We've been able to decrease the number of major and minor student infractions this year significantly. Our current Scantron data shows the professional learning we've put into place is resulting in gains in both reading and math. The red bar indicates the expected gain as determined by Scantron, while the blue bar shows an actual gain. As you can see by the arrows, our mean scale scores are higher in most areas than what is expected by Scantron. For our current DIBELS data, I chose to show you a more detailed graph. This graph shows the number of students instead of the percentage, and it shows all the subcategories of the assessment. Data from the beginning of the year is on the left, middle of the year on the right. Boxed, you can see how kindergarten students scored on the first sound fluency, comparing to the box on the right where they scored middle of year. The two boxes are easy to see that we decreased our red students and increased our number of green students. The next two boxes indicate that we have further to stretch with our kindergarten and level-one students in the area of correct letter sounds. Meanwhile, the four arrows on the right and in the middle of the year graph clearly indicate our intermediate students are making growth in both reading comprehension and vocabulary, stretching in the right direction. We definitely like seeing more greens and blues and fewer reds and yellows. So as Dylan Willem said, "If we create a culture where every teacher believes they need to improve, not because they aren't good enough, but because they can be even better, then there's no limit to what we can achieve." In this manner, we continue to celebrate successes, seek out opportunities for growth, stretching ourselves as we continue the professional learning we began at the beginning of the year, while adding Envision's Math for all students and staff, and a before-school study club for some level fours and fives, increasing their instructional day by 45 minutes two times a week. Finally, as Dr. Swanson stated on many occasions, there are many more ways to measure a school than their test scores. And so I want to show you how we at TKE, or soon-to-be Tennyson Knowles Preparatory, have stretched ourselves in the ways that are not measured by the state assessment. Our students collected hundreds of canned goods. With the help of staff donations and Westminster Education Foundation, we were able to provide 26 meals for Thanksgiving to our families. We had 260 students and families attend our math night, where everyone learned how to play a level-appropriate game, and then they took that game with them as well. We offer after-school science courses and field trips to 45 students through the Great Outdoors Colorado Grant. Our two Lego teams both received awards at a regional competition in our first year of having Lego League. 75 students performed a choreographed dance to live music within Celebrate the Beat. Just last Wednesday, while there was snow falling, we had 130 parents and family members and students attend our literacy night, where we partnered with the Junior League of Denver to provide every student with three free books. 75 students, along with some very lucky parents and staff, were able to attend the Monet exhibit when it came to Denver. And 70 students, the most in any Colorado Reading Partners program, get to read one-on-one with a volunteer two times a week through our partnership with Reading Partners. So while it's easy to see how we use the word stretch to focus our work at Tennyson Knowles, I ask you, what's your word? This concludes my board presentation. Thank you for allowing me to share our story, and thank you, big special thanks to my staff that is all back there with their words. It's pretty impressive to see how they show up every time.
Thank you. I would say my words right now are breathe. I saw that one right away. It's like, we all need to remember to breathe, and then I'd like to learn how to balance. But with that being said, board questions, comments? Did you go to Tennyson Knowles?
I did go to Tennyson Knowles. That was my elementary.
I love what you guys have done, how you've picked words that mean something to each of you, the CLD extra training that everybody's done. Great job on working to make a test reflect everything else that you do.
Veronica, can we go back to slides five and six real quick? I can't remember which one it was.
Five.
Five. First of all, I just want to acknowledge the fact that when you were showing us your graphs, all the slides in and graphics that came in to explain where we were looking, loved it.
That's a plus.
That, yeah, we, that needs to be done at every presentation because we weren't looking for it.
That a new bar, Heather. There you go.
So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that.
Loved it.
I wrote that down. Similar question I asked Ms. Davis. If you could talk a little bit about how you, your staff is working collectively and collaboratively when you look at data to make sure things move forward.
So like I said, we started at the very beginning of the year. We sat down, we looked at our data, we dug into it pretty deep. We were able to determine where the root cause was for our students in CLD that went back. We also then decided to set goals for that. We look at data monthly. That's what I mean by the professional learning communities. We look at it whole school three times a year, but then we sit down and we really look at the professional learning communities. That's the time when teachers are scoring data that's happening right now. And so it's actually adding that math component, and Jeff Reposa actually helped us with that math component addition. And we worked with Russ at the beginning of the year on scoring writing in order to sit down and say, okay, we're going to commonly score these writing assessments, and then we're going to make changes. So if you and I sit down and you have better test scores on something, then that means I need to find out what you're doing. And so we're having and we're giving teachers that time to discuss, which I think is huge. So teachers are doing it three times a year with our big data, and we did that last year. We were sitting down, I was so impressed with our staff, at the end of the school year, you know, a couple, couple days left of the school year, and they sat down and came up with next steps for the kids that were in their classes for the year after, so that our teachers could start on day one with what we needed to work on.
Are you finished?
Oh, there are a lot of questions.
I was just looking at the, I thought, the percentage of responses on some, 53% of students have graduated from high school.
Oh, you're looking at the survey results? Yeah, that's definitely something that we're working on to work with our students. It was 53% of students answered they would graduate high school. 28% said they were worried about their future, and 52% said that they were hopeful about their future. So we sat down and we took that data. That's another data point that we look at. It's something that is reflected in our mindfulness practices at school, but it's something that we've also really sat down, the school psychologist and I sat down and targeted, what are we going to do to make these changes to get kids to start thinking about that future? Sometimes it's, it's difficult to think beyond what, what you see and what your reality is. And so we're trying to make sure that we bring people in to be able to show them other alternative realities that they can choose from. A prime example would be orchestra. We have 22 students who come in early in the morning to do orchestra, and that's changing their perspective. 22 students is the most amount an elementary school has in the orchestra program. I just didn't have a good picture to include, so.
Some of that is telling about students who are in the middle of the school, what level they're starting. 24% already indicating they have a difficult high-personing pulse. I'm trying to think back when I was in elementary school. Like, I trusted everybody, I didn't worry about anything. You know, it's a different time, and maybe a lot of social media plays into this. It's such a different time where these elementary school kids think like this, and then they have to come in and you, it was much easier to be a teacher 50 years ago than it is today.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why we do our de-escalation trainings every year. That's why we have done the social-emotional learning. We've had Melissa out multiple times to do the trauma-informed practices, as well as the self-care for my staff. When you're dealing with big things like that, it can take its toll. And so we have worked really hard to try to make sure that we understand what our families are going through. But unless you live it, you don't know it. And so we're looking to try to make sure that we can support kids once they get in the door. And that was something that we changed two years ago when we started our start time earlier. We went back, staff voted to start our school day at 8:00 instead of 8:20, which is what it had previously been, in order to add in that component of class meetings and mindfulness. And so that was something that we found to be really important to us, and as you can see by the discipline, it's impacted. Because you can't teach kids that are out of class because they're in trouble, and so they're in class.
So what's interesting is I just, I read a report that technology has twofold. It's, it's great for kids because it helps them learn. I mean, the knowledge we can gain from technology, but it also can be a deterrent for us, too, because it also can be very stress hard for kids with the, the changing of technology changes so quick. So try to imagine what we've seen the changes in 10 years is, is 10 times faster than we see in the, in the previous 40 years before. So how we deal with that and what we have to do in such a fast pace and what changes year by year and what we need to do with our kids is important. And as we keep moving and becoming more technology toward, toward things, we have to really understand how that affects our kids. So I think it's great that we, we think about that and continue to be mindful about that as we're going through. Another thing is, and I'm glad you pointed that out, because I always have a tendency to go back and compare, for instance, the third, the fourth, and fifth grade from 2018 to 2019. But remember that it's not going across, it's, it's coming down diagonally, because you're looking at the third-grade kids, in 19, you're looking at the fourth-grade kids. So thank you. Because they kept looking, oh, God, why are we dropping? The third grade is dropping every year, but those kids are moving across. So we have to look at the growth coming down through the years, too.
That's right, the cohorts.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
In regards to the student survey, just going back to what Kenny brought up, with the students who answered 53% said some uncertainties that they would graduate, and 28 answered worried about their future. When we look at, look at that, we can't data mine and see which students are saying those things, can we? And identify those at an individual level? Or is this just a blanket survey and?
The data that we were, I believe, the data that we were given, the way that we've been able to look at it so far has just been the overall numbers.
The aggregate?
Yeah, we haven't received the other data.
I mean, I would argue that they're answering this with some external factors at play as well. It's not just when they're worried about their future. Yeah. So that's, that was the one thing that came to my mind. The other question I have is not pertaining to those surveys, but you mentioned Cognia coaches. Can you elaborate a little bit?
So I work with the Cognia Coach. Her name is Jill Bromlett. She comes once a month. This last month, she came twice. So, because I missed her the month before, she comes in, she and I go in and do learning walks in every single classroom, and then we have follow-up conversations and coaching conversations. And then the teacher will leave, and how I've explained it to my staff is she's coaching me. She's coaching me on how to have those conversations, how to really look at data. One of the things that we changed this year is we have smaller focuses, and so we're looking at a few things versus looking at everything. Another thing that we changed this year is that when we're talking to teachers, we're coaching them on just a couple of things to try to make sure it's manageable.
Board, just one thing to bring back up. Part of the reason we went with Advanced Ed, which is now Cognia, was so that we had an accrediting body that was a resource and a partner, and I just think that exemplifies why we sought them out as opposed to an entity that is there to regulate in police. So I just think, I appreciate you bringing that up.
It's been great.
That's great. Last question I have for you. Did you, did I miss it in the presentation? Did you have a commitment scores as far as?
I do have commitment scores. They were not in the presentation. We are putting our commitment at 725 for all areas. That's been our commitment for the last few years, and we're setting that goal and continuing to work towards that.
And as I asked Ms. Davis, do you feel like you have the resources you need to, and you're, to get to that point?
Absolutely. We've worked really hard, and we continue to work hard every single day. And the staff behind me, they're champions. And so we definitely have what we need in order to get there. It's, it's a tough pull.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And every time HR comes on up with their report, Personnel Matters with Mr. Kirk Lade clear in the room.
Check him the names.
Breathe. That was one of the words.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson, prepare for you a personnel report containing items 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, and 5.0 for your consideration and approval.
Thank you, sir. Board.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve Personnel Matters as presented on items 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, and 5.0.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? With none, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye, thank you. All right. The next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Westminster Public Schools, a Cognia-credit organization, will be Tuesday, March 10, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. The regular meeting will be held in the lecture hall of Westminster High School. Notices of meetings are posted on board docs 24 hours before each business meeting. Veronica, the time is now 6:23, and we are adjourned.